Good evening. The time is now 6:33 PM. Welcome, everybody. I'm really excited for tonight. So for those attending tonight's meeting, you should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by APAC and ASRSD. Any audience members wishing to record any part of this meeting must inform the chairperson, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Massachusetts Wiretap statute. The listings of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and any other items not listed may also be brought up in discussion to the extent permitted by law. Okay. Let us say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, whenever you're ready, we can do roll call.
Mr. Brezner?
Here.
Mrs. Bernard?
Here.
Mr. Pointy?
Here.
Mrs. Reschut?
There.
Mr. Luthbro?
Here.
Mrs. Scann?
Here. All right. We're going to go into public participation. I'll start with online, and I'll give it about five seconds before I switch over. All right. Do we have anybody in person that has public participation? Not tonight? All right. I'm going to move forward because I want to be mindful of our time, and we're really excited to get to the next section, which is our high school student representatives. That's Ms. Devon and Ms. Nia.
Ms. Devon is unfortunately sick tonight.
Oh.
Devon is here.
Awesome.
Hi, everyone. So I have a couple things to talk about today, but I thought I'd start off with RAD. I brought with me my RAD instructor, Ms. Rocco, and she's going to talk a little bit about RAD. Right now in RAD, we're working on finishing up the course, and our exam's coming up really soon. So yeah.
No exam, Devon.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Rocco. I'm one of the wellness teachers at the high school. So I am fortunate enough to teach RAD, which is rape aggression defense to juniors and senior female students that we have. This course is my favorite course, my least favorite course, all in the same sentence, that we have to teach it. But we have so many kids that sign up. From our first session ever, we had about eight kids. In this session, we have 25. So it's growing. It's, the word is getting out there. We have a simulation at the end. That's the exam, where area police officers come in, and they wear, I'll say, the Michelin man suits. And the females do too. And they actually get to be physical and fight off the bad guy. We talk about health times 10, I'll say. We don't sugarcoat. This is a real-life topic. It's a serious topic. And we try to make the females feel comfortable enough to have open conversations about some topics that might not feel like they should be talked about. But I'm happy to take any questions. Obviously Devon's in it, so I know she's been telling you guys about it. But yeah, I'm happy to answer anything you guys have.
Before I have the school committee members answer questions, I want to highlight, Devon, you did exactly what I asked you to do the first time, and you pursued it. Thank you. I appreciate that, and I want to recognize that. Thank you so much for taking your job so seriously, and not out of fear, but out of pure love for what you're doing in highlighting your teacher. A lot of times, you know that teachers are advocating for themselves, or advocating for students. But to see a student advocate the way you have for this teacher in this class, I'm very proud of you. So thank you so much for doing that. And now I'll open it up to everybody else in gym.
As a part of the training, do you spend time in circles talking about avoiding situations and recognizing when situations are losing control? Because that, I mean, that's a, when I think back on situations that I've been around, there were clear telltale signs that were, you know, think of having a cell phone argument.
Yep. So we definitely talk about being aware of your surroundings. That's the whole point of this class. You know, and the red flags. You know, we're not naive to think that when they go to college, they're not going to be putting themselves in situations that might go left. And when that goes left, what you can do to help yourself get out or help yourself understand this isn't right type thing.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we definitely work on the physical, but it's a lot about the mental, too, like being prepared in those situations. But before getting in those situations, like how to get out of it before it becomes physical.
Right.
Super enthusiastic that this class is available. Love that you're participating. It seems like you're getting a lot out of it. I don't want to use the word enjoying it, but it seems like it's a valuable experience for you. I'm curious if there is anything on the, you know, for our young men in this building, just like, I just feel like I'm dating myself. Like, I just feel like there's a lack of awareness at times about like where boundaries are, and it's really important that we're educating because there's very, like, there's not a special right, right, but there's a, like, I don't know that all young men appreciate where lines are all the time.
Correct.
And so like, how does that come into?
Yep. So we do talk about harassment, and it's not always like right to the rape. You know what I'm saying? There is a RAD for men. RAD for men is super scarce to get certified, and it's only certain places. It only happens a couple times a year. Whereas the women, it happens more often. I know.
So we've been pursuing the RAD for men class. We have Mr. Justo, who's our male counterpart to Ms. Rocco. He's very interested in taking the class. The difficulty's been finding a location for him. I think the closest one was Hampshire or Vermont, who was fairly far up a few years ago. And this was before COVID. I think the closest one to that was Michigan.
So the male one is more geared towards the mental. Knows no, what happens when this happens? Whereas the female is more fighting someone off.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I just think even just from a signaling, again, I want to empower all the women in our school, and I want to make sure it's not just our female student body's responsibility. Like, it is problematic that it's a need. It's an important need that we're meeting, and there's the other side.
Yeah, we have looked into it, and we're still pursuing.
We are actively pursuing.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
Thank you.
And it sounds like you're doing a lot of assessment, which is great. So is there any, is there any conversation around, how do I want to say this? I want to say feeling comfortable enough in the situations to utilize your skills. So what I mean by that, just for clarity purposes, is I know that we're talking about assessment, the environment, what possibly could happen, but still mentally feeling comfortable enough to be in these places and spaces. Because as we know, yes, it is a very tough conversation. It can even get confusing. Sometimes that's the hard part. But being able to feel empowered enough to still go do the.
So from my point of view, when they first walk into the classroom, you can see kind of a ghost, right? Oh, boy, what is this class? And my first question, their first assignment is, why are you here? What is your why? And, you know, some of them write a sentence, some of them write a paragraph. They put me in here. They told me to be here. My friend's here, whatever. And I asked the same question on the last day. And their last day question, so their first day question, is night and day. Night and day. And it's not anything I do. It's everything they do. It's all of them feeling comfortable and confident enough within themselves to understand, hey, I can do this if I have to.
Awesome.
Yeah. I think that like, there are going to be those situations. And I think we even, like, we definitely had a conversation about that, that like, just because these situations might happen doesn't mean that you should like not enjoy the things you want to do or the things you want to pursue because of like what could happen. But this is just more about like preparing yourself for that like what-if situation. But it's good that we definitely hit on that.
You should live life. You can't be scared to live life, and that's, you know, bad things happen to good people all the time. But if you can maybe see a red flag before a bad thing happens, you can help yourself.
So is this class per semester? So there's a couple opportunities?
So before, we'd only offered it one semester. This is the first year we've offered it two semesters. So it's now, and then we're going to have another one in the spring.
Correct. And it's open to all grades?
Juniors and seniors. We want them to feel a little bit more comfortable within the building before we sort them into what we're going to enroll them in.
Awesome. Anybody else have any question?
I just wanted to say thank you both for taking the class and for teaching it. I think it's not always an easy thing to do to teach this course. And I applaud you for all the work and the support from Principal Christie. I just think it's so important, and I'm really excited for you guys. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. No, I mean, the first day, I came into the school, and I said, hey, Mr. Christie, we got to do this. Let's do this. And his first thing was like, let's do it. So I appreciate him, Dr. Meyer, and, you know, the counselors who helped set this up, and obviously all the students who have pushed to make this happen.
Yeah.
I'm Chairman Mick. I'm going to take a page out of our Student Reps book and advocate for a teacher. Just so that all of you know, Ms. Rocco is one of the wellness teachers that has been displaced from the gym being closed. And she's done a, both her and Mr. Justo have done a tremendous job of being creative and having gym class. So in fact, this is, I think you remember one day the camera was off a little bit? Well, this has been used for phys ed in a really imaginative way. So there's nothing more than I would like to have to adjust that camera because of phys ed, it's happening. But you'll see it all over the place. If we use the field, cafeteria, hallway space, and with a smile and a positive attitude. So it's noted and appreciated. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, my child has wellness right now, and I appreciate your positive attitude up against her morning one.
I have daughter, too. I get it. She is little, but it's the same attitude.
So thank you so much to the both of you. And I don't want to close out your presentation for you, anything else that you want to say.
Thank you.
Okay?
So, thank you. The next thing I want to hit on was senior privileges. So we recently added these for quarter two for seniors. I just got mine approved by Mr. Christie, and I really enjoy it, being able to leave the building for maybe 30 minutes to 40 minutes during advisory and lunch. It's definitely cool to like have something that other people don't, and like I deserve it because I don't, I'm not late. I, like, I'm working on not being tardy and keeping my grades up. So I think it's good to honor the people that are like really working to have those privileges. And I know my friends really enjoy it. They go out, get some donkey donuts, or they go to their house for a couple minutes. But I really like it, so just want to hit on that. I am still my gardening internship. I'm actually really sad for it to end. I really, I really like it. I work with Ms. Melanson and my friend Elena, and we are still growing our plants. It's like a forest in there. There's like, there are plants in there. And we just got a bag of soil. Our, like, funding was cut, but Ms. Melanson was nice enough to buy us a big bag of soil. And we're going to start handing them out to teachers and writing little care cards. So I'm definitely excited for that. Looking forward to that Saturday ending. And the last thing is, as a senior, I've been really pushing through with those applications. I think I have like two more and a couple supplemental left. But it's definitely taught me to manage my time with like all these hard classes, while also like trying to get this all done by the due date. And it's paying off. I got my first acceptance, which is really cool. So I'm just hoping for that to be over soon so I can just focus on school because it's definitely a lot going on at once. So yeah, I'm going to keep pushing through that. I know a ton of seniors are doing the same thing. And also, I'm excited for a break and the new semester, getting new classes. I think after break, our Thanksgiving break, we definitely like are having like a push at work. But also, some classes are slowing down, too, because it's becoming the end. But definitely excited for those new classes and seeing new teachers and trying new things. So yeah. Are there any questions?
Was that a school you were watching?
Yeah. It was Embry-Riddle Aeronautical in Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm looking to do like astronomy and astrophysics and engineering, so that's a really good school for that. And it was really, really cool. They gave me like confetti and sunglasses and stuff.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
Of course.
Bringing friends.
Yeah, I know. I wish Nia could be here, too.
All right. Please, Mr. Christie, let me know. Will you miss her?
I know.
We'll be seeing her again.
I knew she was sad to miss her.
Oh, yeah.
The quarters. Yeah. And I, the one thing I do want to highlight also is we do like, the way that you and Nia interact, and we definitely take the ball from each other pretty quickly. So definitely like the teamwork there. So I appreciate, again, not just the follow-through, but the advocating that you're doing for your teachers. I think that's a, thank you.
I love Ms. Rocco.
Right back at you.
One question for Mr. Christie. Mr. Christie, and again, you know me and my ideas. I know, like, limping, um, basing it off of what Chris is saying and the deficit that we have for our male students, is it possible to create a situation where, until we can get the, you know, necessary things we need so that they can have a male-centered one, is it possible to almost, and Ms. Rocco, you might have to help me here, have a class where there is the perspective of conversation between the two, male, female, right? Because if we're talking about boundaries, I love the fact that you said boundaries, where we're looking at signals and boundaries.
Yeah.
Now, again, I know there are parameters around what education is, right? Like, off the top of my head, what I thought of as soon as Chris said that is there's a book called Boundaries that like I gave my daughter, I think, the summer of eighth grade because she was going into high school. So I don't know if it's something that could be based like that, but just so that we're able to benefit it. So we're doing the pro, you know, the full, or how do you say it? Well-rounded proactive approach. I can think about it. Well-rounded proactive approach. I don't know if that's possible.
I love your question because it really strikes at the heart of why we're here, which is educating students. And that's not just in the classroom, random Tuesday, and say, physics class. It's really about preparing students for life outside of the walls. I do know that the topic is touched on in both freshman and sophomore health classes. So students are encountering that in both of those situations. But can we expand on it? Absolutely. And I think that's something that we should look at. So thank you. Great, great question.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the consent agenda, actually, Phil, I'm going to slide over to you for the consent agenda before we get to the rest of what we're going to do.
Okay. I'd like to point out on consent agenda, the four bullets of AP warrants, number 1076, 1077, 1084, 1085, are written correctly dated. Those were cut and paste from the prior agenda. So I just want to make you aware that the first two, number 1076 and 1077, were dated November 10, 2023. And AP warrants 1084 and 1085 were dated November 24, 23.
Make your consent. And dollars.
Now that we have that on the floor, does anybody have any discussion that they want to have outside of what we have for both? I'm willing to adjourn your motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda, including the listed minutes and account payable and payroll warrants.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Pass it. And we'll move forward. We're going to go on to our new business. So first up, we have robotics, out-of-state overnight field trips for the 2023, 2024 school year with Ms. Pamela Clements. Did I say that correctly for the last name?
Clements.
Thank you.
Good evening. So my name is Pamela Clements. I'm the assistant coach for Androna One, which is the high school robotics team. We're in our 11th season here, and we are asking for permission to go on our out-of-state and overnight field trips. This year, a lot of our competitions are, actually, almost all of them are out-of-state or overnight. We are asking for permission to go to Week Zero, which happens in February. And that's a preseason competition where we go and compete for the day in Merrimack, New Hampshire. And then our second trip, which is our first official competition, is at Salem High School in Salem, New Hampshire. And that is a day trip as well. That will happen on a Friday and Saturday. Our second competition, the first two of these competitions are guaranteed for us is to compete in, is an overnight trip to URI in Rhode Island. And that will happen only because it's the distance away. We're going to stay overnight. And that is the week end of 314 to 316. Should we do well at those two competitions? Our hope is to compete in the New England Championship, which is in West Springfield, Mass, in April. And then that's when we would find out if two weeks later, we would then compete in Texas at the World Championship. So we're asking for permission now to facilitate any planning that far ahead. So I just want to tell you a little bit about the robotics team. Like I said, we've been around for 10 years. We, right now, we have about 26 high schools students that are participating. A lot of our students come from all different backgrounds and different, and go into different, either STEM fields or, and/or other fields. So it's, speaking from experience, a great experience for our kids and very helpful for them to get into either college and/or the workforce. Anyone have any questions? Yeah?
So you have 26 now. Is that the number that you usually have? I'm trying to.
So our all-time high, at one point, we had almost 25% of the school population. We had 53 kids on the team. It was our highest number of students. I believe that was in the 2019 competition, I'm sorry, the 2018 competition season. So we lost members during the pandemic. Even though we were one of the only clubs that went virtual, we still had meetings. All of our coaches and mentors are, you know, some parents, we have parents, but we also have a lot of volunteers from the community who work in engineering and work in these things. So they kept coming during the pandemic, and we did remote meetings. We did social distance meetings. So we're building back up. We also lost a lot. We had a lot of, a couple of large graduating classes. In 2019 and 2020, we lost, in both those years, 13 kids, not lost because they graduated. That's good. We couldn't keep them here. We tried, right? So they graduated and went on, so.
We lost them in Houston.
We didn't lose them in Houston. We have a lot of checks and balances for that. So we, so the team is growing back. We had 22 kids last year. So, and we got, like I said, in 2020, 2021, we got lean. We got down to about, I think the lowest we got was 16 students.
Well, it was COVID years, so.
Yeah, COVID years. So we're building back. So it is, but it's, you know, it's great to see that we have more kids and we have, our retention rates are really good. Like, kids come, and they love it, and they get everything out of it, and they tend to come back. Anybody else?
I'm only to say this is one of my favorite all-time programs. And what teaches kids, not only the course in STEM, but the teamwork, you know, to work together. It's phenomenal. And thank you to coaches and volunteers. It is an enormous, enormous topic. I know.
It is, it is, but it's very rewarding. My two students have graduated, and I'm back here again. Randy's here. He's back here again.
And there are many other coaches and volunteers, I think, that have graduated their students and have been coming back to.
We do. We do, we have, we do. We have, we have a bunch. So that's why I said it's like, parents, well, I'm like, oh, poor parent. They're still parents. They still have those kids. But they're not on the team anymore. But it is a really great program. And like I said, I can speak from experience. Like First Robotics is amazing and it's not just STEM engineering skills. It's, you know, these kids are learning to write emails to adults, speak to adults. A group of our students went with Randy to the State House. They're all advocating. There's two bills right now that a former student at Air Shirley High School has written that are before the State Congress right now to fund robotics teams in public schools all over the state. So it's with Representative Sina, and you guys probably know Olivia Ostraker. So she wrote this bill originally when she was here. And it went through one time and it's through again. And we're trying to get it so that not only First Robotics, Vex Robotics and Science Olympiad, we're trying to get that out so that everyone in the state has the same opportunity and that the state of Massachusetts will help fund to start those teams, especially in different low income and other areas of the state. So we want to be the first state in the country to have a robotics team in every school in the state.
Do you have the number of that bill so we can send that few little letters to people?
Do you know the number? You should know that.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in our packet. We have it here. Oh, you're good. Thank you.
So especially if you know somebody outside of Mass, surely. Because we've got our representatives covered, but if you have family anywhere in the state, we'll send you, like, send me an email and I'll send you a little. We have a pre-written script. We're sending it out and they can send it to their state representative and get backing for this.
Would you, because I know for me, I do not want to forget this. We have a school committee email, like, right on the website. If you could just send that letter to us.
You bet.
And then what we could do is, what I can do is respond back and just let you know where we send it. Because I think that would be more beneficial.
Yeah, there is actually, we have an email set up and we've asked everyone, because we're working with a bunch of other robotics teams. We've pulled in other teams from other parts of the state. And what we do is we ask people whenever they send it out to their representative if they copy mass first, gmail, at gmail dot com. And that will let us know so that we're tracking, of course, all the different sponsors of the bill. The two bills. So, you know, Senator Bellis is. Sponsor? He's the sponsor? So it's not sponsor. I'm saying the wrong words. I've learned a lot about the state. Anyway, so Senator Bellis in the State Senate and Representative Sina in the House are the ones that are sponsoring that, so. It's awesome, but.
Well, even though, even though we don't, you know, never hurts a creature in the choir.
Right, right. You can, you can certainly do that. He'll absolutely. Does anyone have any questions about the trips itself or the travel or?
No, we don't. We trust, we believe in you. We've seen what you've done. So if no one, if there's no further discussion, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve all the agenda for the robotics team this year to partake in the various competitions and programs that they're going to as listed in our package.
And discussed. This March date.
Okay, and let's go. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And we're looking forward to seeing you make it.
All right. Thank you. We're going to build the robot first. All right, thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay, I am going to move down to the proposed school calendar, 2023, 2024, school calendar updates with Mr. Plunkett.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This year, we switched from half days to 90-minute early releases. And it's affected our parent teacher conferences for the elementary schools. So D bus made us aware that our early release schedules for March, I'm sorry, December 14th and 15th would not, the buses would not be able to get back to the high school and middle school for a regular dismissal at 2:20. So we're going to change those, those dates from a 90-minute early release to a two-hour early release. So elementary students will be dismissed at 1:15. And the buses will have plenty of time to get back to the high school and the middle school at the regular dismissal. This is unique. We found this out just switching from 90, half days to 90-minute release, that we can't do the elementary first and not have the high school and middle school do the same early release schedule. So we also found out during getting some feedback from the teachers that Friday, March 29th is Good Friday. So we're going to switch that parent teacher conference date to Wednesday, March 27th with a two-hour early release. So the four dates for elementary parent teacher conferences will be December 14th and 15th, a two-hour early release, and then March 27th and 28th on the school calendar for the parent teacher conferences. And all with a two-hour early release. All other 90-minute early releases are at 1:45 for the elementary school and 12:50 for the high school and middle school.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, Joyce. So, Mill, I was trying to get this down. I apologize. So this still leaves plenty of time for everybody to have lunch. We're not interfering with the lunch schedule at all.
Yeah, we checked the principals. I think H L top has the most lunches, so they're done at 1:12.
Okay, so.
It doesn't affect the lunches.
Nothing wrong with leaving right after lunch, but we have to have lunch first.
Right, we have to have lunch.
Because that was one of the reasons that we did that different release thing was to make sure that we had plenty of time for the lunches, right?
Correct.
To piggyback on this a little bit, we received, I think it's fair to say we received lots of feedback on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and moving from a 90-minute, moving to a 90-minute from a half day. Though I still believe that, and this is certainly a piggyback, we do have to do the 90-minute over the half day. We are considering in the calendar for next year when we present to the school committee, just not having school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. A lot of teachers banked on that half day for travel time and families too.
Yeah, but isn't that, isn't some of this in the union contract? Some of these dates and stuff?
We might have to use a zipper clause to negotiate that, but we have mentioned this to the union presidents. We can certainly start school a day later. We can certainly go another day in June. But I think that day, preparing for a holiday that is the next day, literally the next day, is difficult for many families, including teachers and families. There was, there was quite a bit of feedback on that 90-minute early release, both from our staff and from parents. So we are certainly going to consider just not having school that day going forward.
Sounds good.
We will present the calendar after, sometime, sorry.
So if we don't have school, then how does that affect our number of days?
It won't affect it at all.
Are we going to have to tack a day on to the end of the year?
Yes.
Or start a year earlier?
Yes.
Start earlier.
We either start a day.
So this isn't just like a give me, right?
Oh, no, no, no. No, it's essentially taking a day in August or taking a day in June. And we will still have 181 days at school. It won't affect that at all. It's just instead of, if instead of getting out on June 13th, I'm making this data, we would get out at June 14th. Or instead of starting on August 28th, we would start on August 27th. It doesn't change contractual obligated days at all.
Well, when we get to the calendar, we can revisit this. This isn't etched in stone yet, right? Because what we're also running into, so while you have a parent, oh, I didn't have travel time or whatever, we also have people who are sending kids off to camp and they're being interfered with the fact that we go so late in June and then snow days and whatever. So, I mean, this is not like, oh, sure, no problem. There's all kinds of things on the other end that someone's going to be made upset about.
Absolutely, which is why we will, I'm kind of giving a preview here, but we will present that as an option in the school committee votes on the calendar. So we would certainly listen to.
So since we have global warming, we'll never have another snow day, so.
It feels pretty cold out there today.
It's less than an inch, Adam, don't worry about it.
Anybody else have any discussion? No, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the revised calendar for 23, 24 as presented by Mr. Plunkett.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, pass this and we're going to move forward. So our next proposal is for FY 2024 Administrative Salary Budget Transfers. And we're back to Mr. Plunkett.
This is a little bit different this year. In the spring, when we were certifying, just before we were certifying the FY 24 budget, I put all the teacher salaries into the appropriate cost centers in each building and each cost center. So the only salaries that we need to move this fall are these administrative salaries. We budgeted $50,000 at a line that we brought forth in the budget. And now we'd like to allocate them to each of the lines that are supposed to be in for the FY 23, 24 school year and fiscal '24. So I have a spreadsheet prepared, which is, there's no net effect on the budget balance. These offset, the debits are going to the salary accounts. And we're going to credit the $50,000 that we had for salaries, for administrative contract salaries and new contracts. So you can see the total of all the transfers is 57,957.54. So we're using the 50,000 that we budgeted plus some monies from the health insurance offset, which is grandfathered and sunsetting. So that goes down with the number of former Air teachers who have health insurance and some monies that were budgeted and there have been no expenditures from and no encumbrances for FY '24. So we're going to use a total of 57,957.54 to move to those salary lines. There is a shortage of 40,685.87 for these transfers. We are going to reclass salary expense to choice and some grants to make, to cover that deficit. So we will transfer that expense out. There's no overall effect to the budget because these do offset. The operating capital budget remains unchanged at $32,192,565. And we do have to get a vote from the school committee because we are changing the budget line amounts.
Does anybody have any questions? Any room for discussion? Here are none, and I will entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we do the proposed Administration Salary Budget Transfers as outlined in our packet and is presented by Mr. Plunkett.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Awesome. Got a double. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, we're moving forward. That's been approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're going to move forward to the superintendent's report from Dr. Venda.
Thank you. We have an update on the high school gym repair project. Unfortunately, there is a delay. They will be starting next Monday due to a, some materials not being available to get the project started. The estimated project duration is still four to five weeks. So hopefully that will give us enough time to have the, what is the basketball group that comes in, Mr. Plunkett?
January.
Wizards?
The Harlem Wizards in.
January what?
The last weekend.
January.
January. Mr. Deppy's nervous.
30th.
The. I know we heard from, I don't remember which town basketball program. What has been the impact on those local programs? Are they not running, running? How has this impacted beyond? I know it's impacting day-to-day operations of the school, but do we know what?
It's impacting all of those programs. So we are opening on Sundays. Is it just Sundays or is it Saturdays and Sundays?
Saturdays and Sundays.
And so they are able to use other gyms. Here, the middle school, I don't know if anybody's using Laura White right now. But we are providing that at no charge to help. But it's certainly not, not getting the chip time that they were getting when it was open.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion?
Okay, if you could turn, you have a picture in your packet here. We're going to talk about the pocket force for a moment. The original site was planned as right at the end of the parking lot. So as you're driving out of the middle school, it was planned to be in that little green area as you're leaving. Principal Ulrich met with Beth Sudemeyer about this. And that, that spot is actually used for overflow parking during events. The other problem with that spot is it doesn't get much water. So they were talking about possibly changing the site, which we wanted to refer to the school committee to give that, tell you their proposed new site and our opinion on it. So if you're looking at this, the proposed new site is actually just below where the original one was. It's kind of a squiggly line circle that says proposed site. That really isn't an area that is heavily used by the school. It would be about 20, probably 20 feet off of where the baseball field is now. We don't see an issue with that site. There is more rainwater that would be collected there that would be good for the forest. Again, from looking at this, the only possible downside that we may see is someday in the future, if we were building an addition, would it go there? However, if that's the case, we would certainly just build the addition and we would talk about a different site for a park for us at that point.
Is there an area? Is this one acre, two acres, three acres, 10 by 12, 14 by 11? There's no reference here as to.
It is.
Of course, I don't have a class on, so.
Yeah, I believe she did go over that in the original presentation. And I'm not recalling. I can certainly get you that information. But it's certainly, it's much smaller. I don't believe it's even an acre.
Yeah, because it's not the same size as what they were.
It is, yeah, it is.
I mean, if this has any accuracy.
Right, yeah. But we can, we can get the relative size of that.
Just carry.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Ken, when you're, I mean, I'm fine with all the changes. That's fine. But the, when you're out there, if you could talk with Mr. Kendall and the president of teachers out of the area and Principal Ulrich, what areas that surround us, I know where they're, especially between that and heading out to the road, there are a lot of areas, not just a natural movement in a bunch of places, this is just what's in front of us right now, where we, you call it maintain, you run a mower over because it's there. But it doesn't help us do anything at all, you know? And with all the talk on pollinators and the rest of that, we could easily create a pretty sizable buffer zone. That doesn't have to be mowed. You just let it go wherever it's going to go and we don't have to maintain it at all. During this process, if that's where the movement is, and I'm fine with the move, if they could take a look at that and go like, all right, this is going to be the pocket force, but we're going to have another half acre of stuff out here that doesn't impact anything that we do here at all ever. And we're just going to just stake it off and say, you know what? We're just going to let this roll, just to give us less to maintain and to really kind of help this pocket area.
That would be a very easy conversation to have. And if it's, to be honest, I don't know what's, if that area surrounding the pocket force is used much. Steve Kendall, Principal Ulrich and the physical education teachers will certainly know if that's the case. My guess is, since that, this is the site where they are planning to put the new pocket force, it probably is in a spreadsheet. So we can initiate that conversation with them.
There, the only thing that I think is kind of on the other side of that picture is there's a softball field.
Correct.
I'm trying to remember if that's fenced at all. I don't think it is. I'm just curious to make sure. I don't think it's used very much now, but it was being used as by town teams even, say, three years ago by a couple softball teams.
The field is fenced, isn't it? So you can keep your buffer with the fence there.
I believe they're planning on at least a 20-foot buffer between the pocket force and the fence.
I have the pocket force presentation that we had back on May 17th when we were voting on this. So according to this, it says up to 2,800 square feet. So what it's supposed to do, I mean, what it's supposed to be. So just to give context. And that's in our presentation folder. So I'm guessing that that's probably what Principal Ulrich and blinking on her last thing, thinking Shabana, can't think of her. Pierce, thank you. Any other discussion?
It's exciting.
Sorry, Hannah.
No, it's great. I mean, there's going to be a lot of educational opportunities associated with this. Mrs. Pierce, one of the science teachers at the high school is involved in this and is going to use it as an opportunity for kids to be part of this and to use it as continuing teaching resource moving forward. So we're excited about it. Also, an updated letter, an update on the letter regarding a request for continued funding to support student academic and mental health. As you remember, on October 3rd, the school committee provided a letter on Mr. Quinte's request to be sent to the governor, senator, state representatives, federal senators, also representatives in the Air and Shirley Select Boards. We have one response. On Thursday, November 30th, we received a call from Congresswoman Trahan's office. They're asking some clarifying questions, the amount of money that we would need to maintain the current staffing model. We are currently finalizing that number and will reach out to their office via this week. They're expecting both an email and a phone call from me on that. So that will happen before Friday. There were no promises made, but there are some bills that are currently being held up in the House of Representatives at the federal level with the, of course, the nonsense that is happening with our.
Federal level.
Yes.
I'd also send your response to the safe distribution because people don't like to get caught when somebody's taking a leak and they're done on a train. Like, you may get a couple other responses. But just whatever you do for Representative Trahan, I would definitely keep the same mailing list.
We could absolutely send our response saying, just to update you on the response from
There you go.
the Congresswoman Trahan's office. And that, we'd be happy to do that. I did want to give you an update on the shelter reimbursement. So we have not received funds from the Department of the GYAP for the shelter located at Machu Picchu Valley Inn. We're currently awaiting a grant that was awarded to us for just over $16,000. And we are still waiting for the $104 a day per student enrolled. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because we are currently paying for transportation costs associated with students who are living in the shelter but not attending our school. So there is an option, if you live in the shelter, that you, if you're a resident of Massachusetts, you can stay in your school of origin. When that happens, we are on the hook for half of that transportation cost. This isn't new. This is something that all districts and we have dealt with for years. But typically, we don't have a large number of students that require this with the shelter opening and having a large number of homeless students in there. There are a few families that are taking advantage of staying in the school of origin, which is having an impact on us. Now, we will get reimbursed some of this, if not all. That reimbursement will happen until next year. I've reached out to the Department of Ed to ask some clarifying questions. They are trying to come up with a change in the Canadian Vental funding so that they can reimburse us this year. But probably not. It's probably not going to happen. So I just, we wanted to make the school committee aware of that. The, the overall running of the shelter and working with MACH has been great. They've been really great to work with and responsive. They've been really great to work with and responsive. The students have been a welcome part of the community. We have some postings up right now to add some additional staff, mainly to Paige Hilltop, who has the most students right now. So the sooner that the state kicks in the funding for this, the better outfit they're going to be.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
What is the timeline? I understand the transportation, you're thinking next year, but what's the timeline on that funding for like each student per day from the state? Because obviously, they're the ones that kind of open the shelter.
That's a question we have asked many times.
Okay.
The answer that I got today was that we might be getting that funding sooner because as of today, there was a funding, additional funding signed by the governor into law, so that could kick in, and be $104 a day. With the grant, I believe that money is already there, we're just simply waiting for that to be awarded. It was approved, we're just waiting for the award to be put to our account.
So would you be hiring, you know, if someone were to apply tomorrow, are you going to hire them because of, especially, I mean, Paige Hilltop's a little bit, you know, near and dear to my heart personally, but their, the classrooms are like 24 kids in a kindergarten classroom. I mean, I think the need is there, so would you hire immediately even if those grants weren't?
Yeah, there's a posting out specifically for, so we would if we, right now, we don't have an applicant for that job in particular, but if a good applicant applies tonight and we can interview tomorrow and we're happy, we'd absolutely extend an offer.
Okay.
Immediately. And then, when we get that funding, we would generally have money over to an account that we are currently using to fund it. With DESI, I don't bank on any of this money until we have it.
So I kind of got a two-parted question, it might be both you and Bill. I know that we have our upcoming budget, so could we look at our current expenses, future, like, you know, immediate expenses, and try and factor that in, given that this shelter, you know, is going to be here next year? And then also, I'm not sure how this works, but I have to believe that the Town of Air has got to be getting some kind of benefit or some kind of grant, where we as representatives of Air need to reach out and say, you know, whatever the benefit is, maybe there's a portion that Air could, I don't know, allocate to us in a given. I'm thinking in general terms, but I'm just thinking, moving forward, rather than continuing to have this issue, somehow, some way, figuring it out, or maybe even using, if there is some kind of benefit coming to the town, for this shelter, kind of highlighting that to help offset the cost.
Adam Scher, if I may?
Yeah.
An alternative suggestion would be to contact the Department of Ed.
Okay.
And actually, get the money that the schools and the school districts that are housing the shelters, we're told what was going to happen. Because the last thing I would want to do is take funding away from the town, when the town needs it for certain things associated. If they, and I don't know that they're getting anything.
Right.
Honestly, for that spot. It might be, the first step might be to see if we can actually get that funding to happen. Now, this could happen relatively quickly now that that has been signed, but when it comes to this type of funding from DESI, I'm a bit of a pessimist. I think you are too, Mr. Plunkett, is that true? But some of the, our contact at DESI is telling us that it is coming. We would just like it to come now.
Yes.
We have reached out to Robert Pomprion and Carly Antonalis at the Town Hall, and they are willing to facilitate a meeting with Jamie Eldridge and Rep. Sina to hear our issues that we're having.
Yeah, we're going to take advantage of that, and we will actually lobby for that robotics bill while we're at it, when they get a two for a meeting.
Yes.
Can you let us know when they're going to be, if they can back you up?
Absolutely. Anybody else?
Okay, we have a sports update for you. The winter season is now upon us. The teams have been prepared since Monday after Thanksgiving, and will be getting their season started over the next few days. Girls' basketball kicks off the season this Friday night, participating in the first Bud Tackett Memorial Tournament at Monty Tech. The Panthers face rival Lunenburg at 5:00, and will play St. Bernards or Monty Tech on Sunday. The boys are also participating in the Bud Tackett Tournament, facing Lunenburg at 5:00 this Saturday at St. Bernards, and will play either St. Bernards or Monty Tech next Monday. The first home game for both teams is next Wednesday, December 13th, against Littleton. Girls play at 5:00, and boys play at 7:00. Games are being played at the middle school. The middle school teams will open their season on Thursdays, December 14th, with fans at West Bowleson. We had record numbers, trying out for teams this winter, and have over 30 students representing the middle school. The boys' ice hockey team, co-op with Lunenburg, will open its season at Lowell, at the Lowell Tournament at 2:00 this Saturday. We have 10 players participating from Air Shirley. Girls' hockey opens its season next Monday, with the Lemusso Co-op, faces Hopkinton at 6:30 at the Wallace Civic Center. Karli Iwa is one of the Blue Devils' top players, while Air Shirley freshman Aurora LaCruz and Sierra Capone are also, also help the team via ice hockey program, excuse me. The co-op swim team also opens its season next Monday, as the team faces Shrewsbury at 4:00. Seven swimmers will represent Air Shirley on Bronfield's team. The track teams open the season next Wednesday, December 13th, with an individual meet at Fitchburg, invitational meet at Fitchburg High School. Over 65 high school students are participating in track this winter. Congratulations to author Roborio on signing his letter of intent to run track at the College of the Holy Cross. Our cheer team is preparing for four February competitions under the direction of coaches Michaela Bazina and Hannah Kendall. Unified mini golf will kickoff after the New Year's in the hallways of the high school. Thanks to Chad Lynchrith and Keisha Yunez for running the program, which is, already has dozen, a dozen participants. And that is all. One final note for the fall season, the football team has made three donations to local charities, Jake Tebow Family Recovery, G-Shoe Foundation, and Littleton, and Loads and Fishes. That is all for the super clubs report.
Thank you, Adam. All right, so we're going to go down to pot, well, there's no ongoing business, so we're going to go to policy review report, and I'm going to pick that up first.
Wonderful. So in our packets, you should have seen updated policies for sections A through L. These represent all the changes from the policy subcommittee, the recommendations that we've brought to these meetings, as well as the sort of final re-review done by the policy sub-subcommittee over the last few weeks, months. I would ask that the committee vote in policy sections A through L, and I'll note, what's not included is policy AA, which I think warrants just a little bit of discussion about how we get that drafted and approved, but otherwise, these should be good to go.
Anybody have any further discussion?
Yes.
Yep, on the BEDH public comment, we could tie this to a trust, the, as posted on the meeting agenda comment.
Yeah.
So I'd like to strike that, because I think, just to keep openness with the public, I think anybody should be allowed to come into the school committee meeting and bring up any topic that they want, whether or not it's on the agenda. Clearly, I think we're very clear in the rest of the policy, that we're not going to get into a back and forth on anything that's ever brought up for that, but I think we should just keep it open, that they should be able to come in with something that's on their agenda, not necessarily ours. So I'd like to strike the sentence on the third line that says, as posted on the meeting agenda, and keep everything else as it stands.
Yes, Joyce. Oh, sorry.
No, I was going to say which sentence in which paragraph?
On the, on the change paragraph, the red paragraph, from the third line down, as posted on the meeting agenda. Just strike that, everything else stays the same.
Chris, do we recognize people as they speak, because this is your section.
Great, go ahead, Chris.
So if I remember correctly, so I could be wrong in this, so one of the problems was that it has, stuff really should relate to what's on the agenda. It's not a wild card discussion. So if someone wishes to apply to the superintendent's office to have something added to the agenda that passes the chairwoman, then it could be on the agenda. But this is not, someone can come in and start discussing anything they wish.
Although if it, yeah.
I mean, that was one of the reasons.
That was, yeah, I think when we had drafted this, if I remember correctly, we were worried about, you know, I mean, again, you see sort of the horror stories of school committee meetings in the news, and folks coming and speaking about anything. I mean, I think if we look at public comment over the last two years that I've been here, nine out of 10 have not been in like direct correlation with the agenda. They do align with the previous part of that sentence, issues of school committee business most of the time. And so what would be difficult, so I think the like question would be, how stringent do we want to be? And do we plan on actually having that be part of our procedure, where we vet topics that the public is going to bring to school committee?
Do you wish to allow that public comment to be simply a venting of anything?
Well, issues of school committee business.
Okay, so I mean, school committee business, school business or school committee business?
School committee business is what the policy says.
Keeping it, and keeping it on what is already prepared to be discussed.
Yeah.
We're not going to discuss it with whoever the person, persons, or persons who stand up and start saying something, but also, there's been times when the committee is totally caught, not knowing anything, if someone brings up something that's totally extraneous, having to do with their own personal agenda.
Yeah.
And that's why I think this is fairly new, that it's limited to what's on the agenda, so that you have a chance to comment on it. It used to be that you had your public comment at the end, which was extremely frustrating because you couldn't make a comment on the fact that we're going to not have, we'd have a half, the calendar change, for example. So if someone wants to come in, that's a very good example, because if someone wants to come in and discuss that, then the staff and maybe the school committee are prepared to listen to what they have to say before it's voted on. And the reason to have this public period is so that you can hear any ideas anybody has on something that's been proposed, been posted on public review, so then that we're not standing here going, well, that. So having gone through a certain period, and other people did too, with people just bringing up extraneous, particularly if we end up going back to zoo, then stuff that was brought up was totally not what was on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's why that was put in there.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's probably why the school committee, M.A.S.K. is probably suggested that, that it keeps it a more circle the wagon type discussion.
I would just say that that line wasn't from M.A.S.K., that was from us.
Well, it was.
We, this group wrote that.
Oh, very good. Nice, nice.
18 months ago. And so I would welcome other sort of questions, comments, and I would just say, I would be curious from a policy perspective, how we would want to enforce or put this in place, given that, I'm thinking about three meetings ago, you know, the group came in to speak about the basketball, using the gen, that wasn't on the agenda. Do we want that comment not allowed? You know, I do think we get comment, I mean, the last school committee meeting, we heard from the teachers at the middle school, like, is that a comment that we are going to not allow? So I don't.
If I may, so the change in that policy, where it was a business on the agenda, was a recommendation from Mike Long through the M.A.S.S., I think, two years ago. Since then, there has been some case law. So on March 7th, this might just be the date, on, no, March 7th, 2023, the Supreme Court of Massachusetts ruled that officials cannot silence members of the public based on the substance of their input during public comment. So there has been some other, and I believe other case law, saying that we cannot restrict what is actually set up in public comment. So that, the line, I do not believe, but actually, it's not any longer. It was a recommendation at the time, there was, at the time when M.A.S.S. and Mike Long recommended this, it was in the midst of COVID, and there were a lot of, if you remember, really tough school committee meetings with public comments about everything that involved COVID. But since then, it has, that has, that line has been challenged and isn't holding up, so just for your information to consider.
Go ahead, Erica.
And I will say this, I know that it's difficult, and it can be an apprehensive situation, but there are benefits to that, and there has been growth, at least particularly in this district. I don't think I'd be sitting here if we didn't have a situation where people are allowed to speak up. Our district, in the face of our district, looks very different because, and this is again, my opinion, I want to make that very clear. Our district looks different because of the ability to come and discuss or bring up something that probably wasn't on the radar. It opens up discussions and provides the ability to give facts or substance to what's being brought up. Is it every time going to happen? No. However, I do think that a lot of difficult growth has come through having that public discussion. Again, now we have law behind it, so again, we will strike it, but I know sometimes when we get into those apprehensive situations, you know, it makes us nervous, but let's look at the positives. There are some positives that do come out of things like this, and helps us to kind of pay attention. It's difficult to be reactive in some situations, however, there can be benefits. So I'm going to just turn it back over to you, Chris.
Yeah, so I think given Adam, Joyce, Erica, and Jim's comments, Kevin, Ashley, anything you'd add, questions or?
I would just say, I strongly agree that I think we need to strike it, obviously, with the case law, we'll do that. I think it's really important that we maintain openness and be inviting to the public and inviting to people to join our meetings, because I think this is the first time we've had two people sit through the whole meeting in many meetings, and I think that's great. And I think we want more people involved, we want more people knowing what we're doing and how hard everyone is working, and I think if we're saying, you can't talk about that, that's just not fair. And also, I came, I met you guys all for the first time because I was.
That wasn't on the agenda.
It was not on the agenda, so I broke that rule. But as Erica just said, that's what got me involved, and that's why I'm sitting here myself. So I think, absolutely, thank you, Jim, that's a good point.
I would encourage your presentation.
So I have a question, because I don't think we've ever done this. It says that the start of each regularly scheduled school meeting, individuals will sign in. Do we have a sign in?
We don't, but there's identifiable information when they stand up, and I do remember us reviewing this my first year, because it came down to, and this is another thing. We can have the sign-up sheet since we're beginning to have these policies, and I believe, where are you, Joyce? Because I want to.
Number one.
Number one.
At the start of the regularly scheduled school meeting, individuals will sign in? Sign in?
For the, for an opportunity to speak, yeah.
Right. Should that be expanded into, do I just put my name down, or I put my name down, or I put my name and address and town down as a sign-in thing?
That is specific, individuals will sign in for the opportunity, so that is purely giving you a first come, first served, given that there's a 15-minute cap, and there's three minutes per participant, so essentially the first five.
Right, and I mean, we want to be careful about getting too specific when we're talking about a policy. So having a person's first name and the town that they live in. So having a person's first name and the town that they live in, I feel like should be enough. I am very privacy conscious and I tend to err on the side of being conservative, because at the end of the day, the person's face is right up there. And if we really wanted to research who it was, it would not be difficult. So, you know, having a simple sign up, sign up sheet should be fine. And I think that we don't want to get too, too specific and then put ourselves into a corner for, for something that I honestly don't believe is gonna be too difficult.
I just, I would take the sign in thing, and I don't see how that does anything if there's no more identification.
But it's not identification purposes, it's, it's the order in which they speak. So like, let's say we have 15 people show up and we only have 15 minutes of public discussion. Each person is allotted three minutes. That's like a right that they have. We're not gonna be able to hear all 15. That's the purpose of the sign up sheet.
Gotcha.
Yep. Sorry.
Michelle, please.
I'm stepping all over your toes.
All right, we have a, procedurally, I feel like, do we want to make a motion and vote on policy B E B H, then J H, and then the whole thing?
I believe that's how you do it.
Great.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
We don't have anything in public comment about the employee's ability to speak.
Is it, are you looking at the second?
Did I miss it?
The red section, and you want to go down to line four? Is that what you're talking about, or are you talking about employee information?
Well, I guess that would, that would cover it. We just wanted to make sure that employees who don't live in Aaronshire would still be able to participate in public comment.
Well, there's staff members, so. It's the fact that there's staff members.
I think technically, though, I don't, I all, that's a great question. I think technically, you're supposed to live in one of the, the two towns.
Right.
But I, but I believe possibly by having that line in there, any staff members addressing the committee?
Yes.
I think the last time we looked at this, before we looked at the handbook, when we drafted that red section, we removed that and we also removed the requirement that people needed to ident, like state their address.
Right.
Because of staff and because, again, there's a number of situations where a student in our school may not have an address or may not have an address within this town. So we wanted to eliminate those.
I just want to make sure. So that, that meets what you're looking for, right? Okay, I just want to make sure. But yes, I agree with you, Chris, procedurally.
All right, so I would entertain a motion that we approve policy B E B H with "as posted on the meeting agenda," which is in the third sentence of paragraph three, struck.
I make a motion for exactly what Chris just said. I'm still getting there, guys.
Say it again, Chris.
That we approve policy B E B H with the phrase "as posted on the meeting agenda," struck from paragraph three, sentence three.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so policy J H, student absences, we have some additional changes added. Would welcome any questions or comments about the additions in blue or the sections struck in blue. Added in red, struck in blue.
Would you like an overview of?
Please.
So we've had some, this is, this mainly affects the high school where credit is actually awarded. So the way that we currently have this written, there is a belief, and then the new chronically absent laws from the Department of Ed, there actually is no such thing as an excused absence. No absence, as far as the state is concerned, is, is excused. If you are out 18 days for a serious medical issue, you are still considered chronically absent from the state of Massachusetts, no exceptions. Where we kind of run into, we're running into some issues with parents is, many of our parents believe that they call and tell us that their child is sick, it's an excused absence and it's not going to affect credit hours for students who won't have to make up those hours. There's a certain number of hours that they have to be in class in order to receive credits. And then trying to have these conversations, saying, no, even if, if, just because you call doesn't mean they don't have to make up those hours. We would need medical documentation. And it, it currently doesn't say that in the handbook and the handbook really represents the policy that we have. So we thought there's a clarification that illness with the medical documentation, if three or more consecutive days, or cumulative absences that would require credit recovery. So it's, it's pretty simple. And we're not saying you have to see a doctor, but if you are out for a certain number of time and you have a medical condition, most doctors' offices would be happy to provide a note stating that this is a, this is an issue for your, for your son or daughter. We would then be able to not enforce the seat hours for credit. That make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And trying, having conversations with, with a couple of parents over the last two months, really, part of it is, you know, you should, you should take my word for it. I'm their parent and they're sick and we can absolutely, are questioning the ethical response from parents about calling out their child. However, there are times where parents might call and say that their child is sick and they're not. And I, I'm fully aware, the two parents that I spoke to were very clear and it is a documented medical condition. All we're asking by what this change is that parents make it easy on us, when we have to have really difficult conversations with parents who may be calling out their child for other reasons, other. Right? Because if we, if we take one parent's word board, we have to take everyone's. And then it's, there's really no consequence of being out as far as the credit. Which is why we're proposing this change. And we are looking to strike the other lines, because we feel with, with that, with the additions that we made in red, the other lines are no longer needed. Any, any questions? We're certainly open to more clear language if there's some recommendation there.
Go ahead, Joyce. So in the handbooks, because this, this should totally be the same wording as in the handbook, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, because as soon as we approve the handbook, that really becomes policy.
Right, but what's in the handbook is based on policy that was already written.
Right, so it's, it mirrors this, right?
Yes.
So if I was a parent, they're all gone. So professional health appointment, that's pretty easy. You go to the health appointment, you bring back a card that says, this one was that doctor so and so. I'll there's a. My first question, and I just don't know. When does it kick in with a kid in the hospital? When do you start teaching them in the hospital? When you go to hospital support and they don't have to pick up the hours?
If it's a student that we know is going to be in the hospital for an extended period of time, as soon as we can find a tutor.
Yeah, so that's.
So we have to post it, we have to interview, hopefully have someone, staff ones to do it.
Standing around waiting to do this, there's not a service in the state that you call up and go?
There are services that you can call. We would, we would, we would try not to use, they're very expensive.
Right, right.
We would, we would try to provide that in-house and give a stipend or pay to, to a teacher that we have first. It could be anywhere from two to three days to two weeks, depending how long it would take us to find someone to provide it.
Right, okay. Because I know there used to be a whole deal about that.
It's, it's not always easy.
Right, okay. And then proper documentation is a little open ended. I mean, what, what do I need as a, as a, I mean, school related field trips? Aren't those kind of educational anyway? But I just saw that.
So.
I mean, some of them is pretty easy, like here's, here's our health, here's from, I was at the doctor's office and here's a, here's a note that we were in the doctor's office, right? But for even our serious family thing, what would I need as a parent to show up with, to document that?
Well, quite honestly, you, you wouldn't need anything unless you have so many absences already that it would affect your number of hours, that would affect, you would, would trigger credit recovery. So if, if you're at that point, we have that many absences that you would have to participate in credit recovery, we would, you know, we would need some type of documentation, a, a obituary, something from, from the, I mean, we would hate to ask for that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, it's really.
But it's, we would only, we would merely only ask for that if it was going to trigger a student having to participate in credit recovery and the parent is saying, no, three of these absences or two of these absences shouldn't count.
Or we shouldn't consider them.
Right, because some, right, someone, someone passed away, right. So we, we hope we are never in that situation where we have to, to ask for that. But it would only be triggered if there are already a number of absences.
Well, since the first one up there was kind of maybe the most problematic in some cases. A serious illness in the family, the people are from out of town and it means that we're going to be traveling to London for a funeral. This is not going to happen in one day or two days. I mean, there's, if I, if you look at that and you're trying to look at cases and like, that might be the serious one there is.
Well, for a serious illness in the family, typically, someone who's employed is gonna have to get the same thing from their employer. So we just reproduce the same document and you'd be fine. But I feel like on a case by case basis, there's gonna be some kind of, some kind of documentation that can be provided. And most likely, what would end up happening, based upon what I'm hearing is, if a, if a student got to that point and let's say they have a couple of absences and it was related to medical, like they were valid absences, it sounds like to me you all would accept, like, let's say, oh, I didn't know or I didn't realize we're at that many days, let me go get an office note from the doctor. Or here's a copy of the discharge visit summary that I got from whatever days. And then those absences would be verified and then that would, that would assist you. Is that correct? Like even if it was backdated?
So we, yes, we, we are well aware that we have many students who suffer from some chronic illnesses, that they're not going to go to the doctor every time.
Right.
Migraines could be one, asthma is one. Most doctors' offices are well aware what these are and are typically aware if students are out multiple days or, or are out periodically. We would only need a note saying, my patient suffers from this and was out these days because of this. It's about two sentences, doctors provide them literally all the time. And it just, it, it's, it helps us with the documentation, so it doesn't look like. So we are not making individual decisions. It's the same criteria for everyone.
I mean, is the question sound wrong or how tight you made it in the policy?
And it needs to, you know, it, it needs to be tight. If you're taking a family trip to Disney World, it's a great trip. It is. I would encourage, it's a great experience. I wouldn't discourage people from going. However, if that is going to put you over your absence number and you will need to, it will trigger credit recovery, those, those aren't gonna count. Right? So if you're going to plan a family trip, come to school the rest of the time, so that it's not an issue when, when you're, when you're doing something that's really should be a great and enjoyable experience for families. We're not saying don't do these things, but the attendance in all other aspects of schools should be so good that this doesn't turn into an issue. And, and really, that's what the, the state is trying to.
What is the state attendance policy?
Well, they, they want you in school every day. But if you, if you miss 10% of your enroll time in school, you're considered chronically absent. So for a typical student who is with us from the beginning of the year to the first day of the school year to the end of the school year, it's 18 days.
18 days.
18 days.
That's a lot.
It is a lot. And we have a lot of students who miss 18 or more days.
Send them to you.
I mean, you know?
We'll take care of it.
That would probably work.
All righty.
Any other questions or comments about the additions or subtractions to policy J H?
No.
Thank you for the reading.
Oh, yeah, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Clary, does have a suggestion.
I'm just mindful of the use of pronouns. And so I noted that in one of the sentences, down after the second red notation about absences not outlined, it says, a student's understanding of the importance of day to day schoolwork is an important factor in shaping of his character. I propose that that be changed to important factor in character development, period. And strike the words, the shaping of his character.
Say it again, it's awesome.
Strike the words, the shaping of his character and replace them with character development, period.
Nice.
All right.
All right, word Charlie Clary, seven points. Thank you. Take all the points I can get.
Great. I'll make a motion that we approve policy J H with the red additions, blue subtractions, and in paragraph, open this, sorry, one, two, three, four, five. Paragraph five, sentence one, replace the shaping of his character with character development.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so last one. I'm sorry, I might need to pause for this.
I think now we can vote.
Yes.
I don't, I hesitate to say, unless there's other questions or discussion.
I might use my gabon.
But I would entertain a motion to approve policy sections A through L.
I make the motion to approve policy sections A through L.
Seconded.
L?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It has been since June of 2021, that we have been looking for this. And I just needed to take that moment to say that. Thank you, everybody, for that. All right. Thank you, Chris, I really.
Thanks for looking at policy A.
How did you know this is a living document?
Yeah.
And it can be changed to.
It can, however, it has not been unilaterally changed since 2012, I believe. So I'm appreciative. Thank you all so much. Okay, so chairperson's notes, two things. One, next meeting, we will review policy AA, so that we can put together a schedule to continuously review our policies, so that we can, we can learn from our past operative stances. And then also, in my notes, I am going to be opening office hours. And what I mean by that is any parents and school community members, that would include staff, parents and students, all students, I don't care if they're four years old. I am going to make time to have a Zoom session. I will be providing information to Michelle, but I will have weekly sessions where people will be able to meet with me and I will be including morning and evening, so we can be equitable for those who have different shifts and times of work. I have asked Dr. Renda if he would put that in his publications as well as the building principals. But I only asked Dr. Renda, I didn't reach out to the principals, so that I, we can disseminate the information to everyone. If someone would like to meet in person, maybe it's something that they don't want to have like a Zoom session over, I'll probably have to make some alterations. But I think we, we regularly engage with people, but to make the extra effort, if they cannot come to school committee or if it's just something in the moment that they want to meet with, if they have access to what those hours are and be able to have a conversation with me, I will do that and I also will be submitting just some guidelines for people, so that that way they know kind of what to expect. Again, it's gonna be a very simple conversation. I do want to make clear, I am willing to listen. It does not mean that I'm gonna be making moves or doing anything. There is appropriate protocols that go forward from a regulatory stance. And also, our power is in unity, so I am not going to move without my teammates or also the administration as well. But I think that it would be very important for us to do this. We also will. We also will be having walkthroughs as well, and that'll be coming in after the Christmas break throughout all of the schools regularly. Definitely monthly, we'll be getting through, hopefully all four schools. I know I will be making a priority as a leader, and then of course, we all will, as long as our schedules allow. So moving on, does anybody have any questions, comments, or anything before I move forward? Yes?
When we start those walkthroughs, it would be great if other school community members are interested, they could join. We just need to make sure it was only three. At a time we can't go over three. Yes?
If we are doing an informational walkthrough and there's no discussion or voting, it can, it doesn't have to be limited to three.
Okay.
And there would never be any voting or discussion in a non-public meeting like that. And so you're not limited to three. I investigated this on nauseam once upon a time.
I appreciate that clarification. I was, I was misinformed or misunderstood, thank you.
Yeah, my question was.
You said without any discussion?
Oh, you can make like comments. Have a discussion, have a vote, or have a.
Aye.
There's no call meeting, there's no voting meeting.
I thought you had to post it, though, even if you're just like gathering in the same place.
You are.
Nope.
You have to.
Yeah.
You have to.
Yeah, we would have to post it. And on top of that, I just want to, and this is just something I'm throwing out there, so please feel free to comment. I don't know about all of you, but in any, any employee in any place that has any kind of leadership, I don't think you want to have a drive-by of a massive amount of leaders rolling through. Like, you know, that, that can be a little nerve-wracking, especially if we're trying to observe the school and what normally is happening. So I'm not trying to roll up on people like Devo, you know, and have us running through the halls and, you know, making people nervous. And forgive me, it's late, my filter is starting to go. So I'm just saying, you know, to to be respectful of the staff and and everyone, we don't want to disrupt them, but on top of that, we want to make sure that we really are there, not only to just observe, but to let them know we're here to support them, so.
They want to know that we're going to announce it.
Well, announcing it and doing it are two different things. So that's why I want to make sure we're doing what we say we're going to do. So I don't think we would have like a massive number of us, you know, coming up to each individual school, because that's, that's not what we're doing. We're, we're not, we're not coming to force anyone's hand or do anything like that. It really is to observe, it is to see, it is to hear, or maybe we get a tap on the shoulder or a quick conversation or something like that. Just because I want to make sure we're all comfortable, everybody in the building, when we do that, and that we're respectful of the fact that this is their job, their livelihood, and that they do this every day.
There's lots of great stuff going on, and we're going to show you the great stuff that's going on, if, if you can join us.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you guys so much. Do I have any other topics for discussion not reasonably anticipated for yet, hours in advance of this meeting?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
As a follow-up to like your Zoom meeting thing. Personally, I hate Zoom meetings, like I just, I feel awkward, I don't feel welcome. The coffee with the superintendent, like how did that go? And do you think that could translate to coffee with the school committee? Obviously, no more than three members.
I mean, it can certainly, we could certainly do something with the school committee with that. It was, it was great, it wasn't well attended. I mean, we're going to have to, we're going to try to have an afternoon time the next time we do it, so hopefully there'll be some more. I think we can, there was a total of five parents showed up, so part of that was, I have to say thank you to Pika Carlson. So the goal for me was to have at least as many people as Superintendent Malone had the last time she did it, which was three. And we had three show up, and I had mentioned this to Mrs. Carlson during that, and she was kind enough to corral a couple of employees who happened to also be parents in the district and encouraged them to go. So there was a total of five, so we beat, we beat that number by, you know, well, almost double as opposed to double, but we're going to keep trying, and we're going to try different, different things, and, you know, at different times, maybe we'll get different results. I know that when Superintendent Malone did this, the attendance was fairly typical. But we can offer it, and there will be a time when someone that doesn't typically attend or has never attended has something that they want to ask and they're going to show up, right? And that is worthwhile.
It makes it an opportunity.
Yeah, it's an opportunity, and if someone really wants to come, they they will. And we did do it a little bit differently, so we did coffee with cabinets, so it wasn't just me. Charlie was there, Bill wasn't that day, but he will be the next time, but Terabose, well, he was, he was, he had, he had a prior, a prior engagement. Terabosek was there, Renee Payne, the nurse director, Lorraine, so almost all of cabinets. So they, they really had the opportunity to ask some really detailed questions to some of the directors, and Mr. Depp was there because the first one wasn't, Paige Hilltop. So we're going to continue with that trend and try to host at least one in every school this year.
Hasn't the principal, Laurie White, been doing that for a couple of years?
I don't believe, I don't believe so.
I'm misinformed, no problem.
I mean, in fairness, the principal, all of our principals hold many night events that where parents have opportunities to come in and talk. Laurie White, no different, they, they just hosted recently, actually, I believe our last, was it our last school committee meeting? They hosted a literacy night, which was extremely well-attended. I had stopped in before our meeting and while they were still setting up, and it was, from what I hear, was a wonderful night. Their parents actually trying to get in a little bit earlier when I was, I was walking in, and people were already parked waiting, waiting to come in. Their events are well, well-attended, as, as well as Paige's.
Erica, something to consider, I mean, I think the Zoom and like those are great, I'm glad that you're doing them, I think it'll be helpful to get parent perspective or community member perspective on what is on the agenda, what are the topics that we're covering. To the point of like the open houses, the literacy nights, there's a lot of events in the schools that are super well-attended, and there's lots of like tables, right? And it may be worthwhile piggybacking off of like when law does their open house, when they do a literacy night, and you have the Air Shirley Educational Foundation has a table, there's no reason, or the, and the, you know, adjustment counselors have a table, there's no reason why school committee couldn't have a table. And that may be a way where you can be a stop on people's night, they may have, oh, here's an idea, here's a question. I find that when I'm attending as a parent, like that's when I get the most like, oh, by the way, what's happening with?
Yes.
And we could just formalize it so it's not just people who happen to know my face and my role, but the people who are at us.
Yeah, well, it's an add-on, right? They're already there. Some other event they have to go to, it's, it's, it's very convenient for parents, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Adding onto that, I think you could also maybe pop into like a PTO meeting. I don't know what the PTO looks like at other schools, but I know Page Hilltop is, they do a really great job, yeah, so I mean.
Yeah, you set up, like afterwards, feel free to grab.
Yeah, some way, just different.
So it's a little bit different, and surely there's one PTO for both the elementary school and the middle school. I believe most of their meetings are virtual still, but it, I mean, that makes it even really easier.
Easier for us, yeah. Or one of you guys.
Yeah, and if you're interested with that, you can set that up, I mean, I'm happy, we're happy to set it up for you, but the building principals schedule those, and they would be happy to have any of you attend.
Yeah, absolutely, I was just about to say that. So I, I know for me, it's a, it's a commitment as chair, but if in those spaces, if you know you're already going to attend and you would like to represent it, that would be great. But I think that those are great ideas as well, just so that way we're visible, we're present, and we're engaging, and we're meeting our only goal as a committee, that we had to engage more with everyone, with the school community. So I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah?
So then on our announcements, if there were things like the PTO meetings and stuff like that, it would be helpful.
What do you mean? Like for us to know what happens?
Like it says December 12th, there is a winter concert, and there's a PTO meeting at the middle school at 7:00.
Okay.
I mean, if you have kids there, then you know, because you get, I try to read all that Adam's stuff.
Okay.
We can add that.
Sure. Okay, communication?
Good. Speaking out. Thanks, Joyce. Announcements for December 5th, 2023. On Wednesday, December 6th, there will be a 90-minute early release for grades preschool through 12 in professional development for teachers. Lunch will be served, dismissal times for high school, middle school are 12:50 p.m., law and PH at 1:45 p.m. Nothing of that we just changed.
Yes, no, not.
Regular 90-minute day. Oh God, it's a 14-minute, that's already.
Oh, okay.
The live days are accurate.
We were, we were fairly confident you were, the school committee was going to approve that, so we didn't make those changes.
Obviously, they reflected. Michelle was ready with the alternate doc.
On Monday, December 11th, report cards issued will be issued for grades preschool through eight. On Tuesday, December 12th, high school winter concert, 6:30 to 8:00 in the high school auditorium. On Wednesday, December 13th, Air Shirley Education Foundation meeting at 7:00 p.m. in the high school media center. Thursday, December 14th, two-hour early release for grades preschool through five and evening conferences, lunch will be served. New dismissal time for this date only for law and PH at 1:15 p.m. Thursday, December 14th, middle school winter concert from 7:00 to 8:15 in the middle school auditorium. Friday, December 15th, two-hour early release for grades preschool to five and afternoon conferences, lunch will be served. New dismissal time for this date only for law and Page Hilltop at 1:15 p.m. Wednesday, December 20th, school committee meeting at 6:30 in the middle school library. Friday, December 22nd, 90-minute early release for grades preschool through 12, lunch will be served, dismissal time, high school, middle school at 12:50 p.m., Laurie White and Page Hilltop at 1:45 p.m. And on Monday, December 25th to Monday, January 1st, no school holiday vacation.
Thank you. Okay. So we do not have an executive session, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'd make the motion that we adjourn this meeting at 8:16 p.m.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.